Stanford pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Here.
Mr. Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Facto?
Here.
Mr. Randall?
Here.
Okay, all board members have been provided with a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. A motion will be entertained to approve the and accept the minutes. We got three of them tonight, provided there are no additions, additions or corrections. So we'll start with the public hearing on 11/10/22, if I get a motion.
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Second.
Bruno?
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yeah. All right, next one is going to be the special meeting for the budget, which was held on 11/10/22. If I get a motion for that one?
Motion.
Mr. Bruno?
Second.
All right, Newton? Hold on.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. And the last one would be for the special meeting, being that we moved the date of 11/19/22, even though that was a regular meeting. If I get a motion for that one?
Motion.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Red beat ya. Mr. Facto?
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno? Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. All right, now I got these. I have nothing much, you can say something later on. There you go. All right, communications. Go through these pretty quick. In between holidays here, we'll try to get through this thing in a timely fashion and get ourselves back to our friends in Alaska. Clinton County Soil and Waterways Conservation District, Town of Skylar Falls, Town of Skylar Falls Highway Department, thank you for participating in the local highway salt reduction environmental protection program mini grant program. In early of '22, we allocated funds for the implementation of salt reduction practices in New York, or excuse me, in Clinton County, New York. Projects were to be implemented on property or equipment owned by local highway departments to provide the public and be a cost-effective practice that leads to reduction of road salt application on roads in Clinton County. The enclosed check is provided as a cost share reimbursement to assist with the purchase and installation of measures that will help your town to in the reduction and application of road salt. Our project's goal was to protect and promote health, safety and general welfare of the people of this state while at the same time protecting the water quality of the county water body. Once again, thank you for your participation. Sincerely, Peter Hager and Clinton County Soil and Water Conservation District. So you ended up getting $1,500, we're gonna have to match that funds. This one's from the homes and community renewal, giving us a little nudge, so to speak. Basically, I won't read this whole thing, but this is the OROCR. This is the CDDG grant we got for $1,250,000. They're giving me a prompt and us a prompt that it's been 12 months and it's time to start moving forward on that project. The deadline would be January of 2024, actually December 31st of 2023. They usually give an extension up to February 5th for 30 days of 2024. I did talk to Ben Madison and he said if you got things going, they would not pull the grant money, but we need to get going. That's what I think I can run into my time to save us some time. I got multiple charter communication ones, I'm not gonna read them all, but basically they just had price increases to just about everything. And they ranged from $5 to a dollar depending on what the spectrum service is. So I don't see anything over five bucks, but everything just went up for the charter services. They also spent, let's see here, they sent this, they'll wa, or excuse me, they will be launching a Chime TV in high definition to expanded basic and SPP select on channel 144 or 482. I know everybody that gets charter is gonna get notifications on this also. And this is Astec America Network will discontinue program on December 31st of 2022. Accordingly, Spectrum will cease to carry that channel. That on communications. All right, everybody had a chance to look at the monthly report, so if I can entertain a motion to file?
Motion to file.
And Mr. Newton?
Second.
Mr. Bruno?
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. All right, receipts. Town clerk, $470, Mason Lane Water, $757.44, Marshall Water, nothing, Woods Mills Water, $79.28, Justice Barber, $110, Justice Van Artwick, $953, cash receipts, $45, CX LLC, Geon, or excuse me, Geico Insurance, that was for the fence damage out there, they finally got us a check, $3,240, Clinton County Treasurer, $1,569.34, charter, $17,600.26, earthquake, $68.40. Can I get a motion to file or accept the receipts?
Motion to accept.
Mr. Newton?
Second.
Mr. Facto?
Hold on.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. Okay, the next one will be for the minutes of the planning board dated 11/1/22. So if I can get a motion to file?
Yes.
Mr. Facto? Mr. Bruno? Hold on.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. Department report counseling?
The only thing I've got is, I know that Fred Cross is still wondering if we had a chance to go through and find out if there's any place for emergency housing.
That's for animals, right?
Uh, no, also for people.
Also, all right. All right, I think we were looking into see if we can find places for animals out there.
Yeah, I'm looking into that.
Um, I know the fire station's still on the list and I'm gonna check with Marshall School too, because that one time they were on the list for sheltering up there. But I know kind of some of that stuff that got closed down during COVID because they didn't want anybody and everybody in there, but I think we're close enough out of that that boys, the schools off ground and so, you know, we'll check with the fire station too, if you wanna see if you got anything else on the animal stuff. Is that it for that one?
Yes, just a couple of things, Kevin.
Yep.
Couple of inquiries regarding that burned out home on Shingle Street and Flat Rock Road. Is there any progress being done for any type of scheduled cleanup on that?
No, probably what we'll end up doing, and I don't wanna jump the gun on it, but we'll probably end up doing a resolution here to get it cleaned up and submit to the county, but I need our code officers felt, and I need time to further that, so that's something we're working on.
Actually, a couple of weeks ago, I was up by there and the wind had blown a piece of the metal right into the highway up there. So, I mean, it's sort of a concern.
Well, I checked on it too.
To get it picked up.
Pulled two pieces, ten from across the road.
They do. Okay.
Yeah.
And my other issue is concerning the website that we've been talking about for about eight, 10 months now. And I had prepared a resolution, I was a little late getting it in, but anyway, if you could possibly, I did email it in, but if you could take a look at it, I'll pass it around, Kevin.
Yeah, I'm gonna address that too on my turn.
But basically, basically.
Oh, give me one more.
There you go. If anyone wants to look at it, there's some extra ones there. But basically with the website, it's a, it's a real issue here that we're not using emails, which are uniform, which are town emails, because a lot of people, when they put a foil in, it's kind of difficult to be using our personal emails. And that's something, as you know, you're taking a look at a few upgrades to it, but this resolution would just basically turn that so we do have emails. So our emails would be like townofskylarfalls.com, in that we would have our names and it would be foil compliant. So if anyone wanted a record, they would be secured. That's my concern with whoever we decide for getting this website going. And that's why I submitted this for the town board to consider it. Hopefully, this thing will be resolved. It's been eight, 10 months. The names of public elected officials aren't even on the website, your phone number isn't on, your email address is not on. I've had multiple calls, like with Mr. Snyder, you know, how do we reach him? You know, the people don't know how to reach him. And this website, this is really important to get this thing up and running. So thank you, that's all I have to say on it.
Anything else yet from anyone else? Thank you. Okay. Mikey, you're up, highway.
Yeah, well, as everybody knows, we got dumped on pretty good with some snow, so we've been out plowing and sanding. Of course, been working on the truck setting and working in the garage quite a bit there. Been doing some painting and trying to get it more airtight.
Did you ever get that out of the door?
No, that'll be in next week.
The bottom section?
Yeah. As they call, they should, they should be in by the 5th of January.
How bad was it when you came in the next day after that storm, the water and that?
It was, it was, it was bad. It was bad. Especially with all that rain and everything, it was.
Yeah, once the truck slush off and melt off and I know it creates it with those drains close, so we should be able to put that out for bid again hopefully by, I think in February or March, that way we can get the rest of that done. The other four are pretty good though, like you said, working out.
Oh, yeah.
Still good now.
Oh, yeah.
The fix that we put on.
Yeah, and I don't know if you need updated specs or updated pricing on your front end loader, but you might wanna get that stuff together, because now that we're at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
And we got that, we transferred that money, I'll try to get you set up there with a new front end loader with the, that clutch connects in the front.
I've been thinking, I'm glad you brought that up too, but.
Oh, you were.
I've been thinking, man, we probably ought to keep that, that older one, that older loader too. Because you'll just never be able to replace a machine like that for what, for what they wanna give in for the trade-in value. I mean, it's got issues, but.
I thought it gave you a pretty good trade-in value on, on one of those previous quarts though, didn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, you would know more than I probably what there were, but I thought he gave you.
He, he did in a way, but we wouldn't be able to replace another one like that. You know, a lot of times we can use that third one, especially, you know, when we're.
When they're getting stuck, cause I'm here.
Oh, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's a call that, just let us, just let us know.
I'd like the board to take that consideration.
I'm pretty sure we got enough even without the trade-in allowance to take care of what you need for your front end loader.
That would be a lot more relaxing to have.
You can start getting your attachments you need. I didn't want to cut you off, did you have any, are you good?
No, we just been, we've just been going out and a lot of blowing over trees and trees that have lained over big time with about four, five inches, six, eight inches of snow on them, and it's been amazing.
Did you have like the town of Plattsburgh help you out? Cause I see you blew a wing or something on one of your trucks, huh? During the big storm?
Yeah, no, no, that was the slusher probably.
Yeah, I saw, I saw a different truck go through, I wasn't sure if that was your guys' truck.
Oh, no, yeah, it should be ours, no, because we got a, we got a Peterbilt.
I know you guys are having a heck of a time with all that snow.
Oh, yeah. All right, no, we.
That was good. God bless you.
Well, thank you very much.
Good job, man.
Thank you very much. That was quite, just quite a, my God.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of trees on Mason Street, it was hard getting through just going out on the Mason Street.
Yeah, that was Mikey for the boy.
It was all over the place.
Yeah, well, thanks, tell the guys we appreciate everything that they're doing out there.
Sure will.
I know we ran the fire department about fifteen.
Oh, yeah, you guys are phenomenal, you know, you know, that fire department.
Said out in Texas, they do cow tipping, out here we do tree shaking, because that's the only way you can get a snap back up, is just snap the stuff off and shake them off.
Yeah, they were an awful lot.
We did, we did leave some for you, I know there's one on the Cat Falls Road, a couple up on Sulphur, and I know we're gonna have to go out.
They're on Shingle, there's some on Turner.
Yeah, so he got some.
But they're stuck into the snow banks pretty bad right now.
Yeah. Yeah. No, we got them off the road as best we can, so.
Yeah.
But, you know, tell the guys, thanks a lot, appreciate it. I just hope they need that announced for help. Want to come for water? We got a lot of stuff, but we'll, uh, anything, you know. Assistant, I just talked to him today, looking into one thing for me at the county level. Bring that back to the board after I hear what's going on. We're on the west end, dog, we get to prove that. And then our attorney unfortunately wasn't able to make it because of the reschedule. He had a prior. Pardon me, or commitment, I should say. Historian, you got anything at all?
Nothing except we had a good event on Sunday, December 4th, so hopefully people were able to be there and.
Uh, yeah, thanks for all your help with that, because you went above and beyond as normal, for the help, and I got that in here, so that's it for you. I will go through my mess of stuff. All right, just to piggyback off, I'll follow up, Mr. Facto was saying with the website, I had that on my agenda too tonight. It looks like everybody's kind of steering towards hiring North Shore Solutions. That was the majority kind of vote after everybody was looking at everything. There's a couple of things I wanna check into with them. Mr. Facto also brought to me some concerns about being ADA compliant. I did look into that, I checked with the town of Plattsburgh, and normally, all the, the quote-unquote website providers that are, you know, do it for a living, so to speak, they make sure the website's ADA compliant, so we'll make sure, and then we'll talk to North Shore that they can provide that service for us. But it looks like that's who we're probably gonna go with naturally until we get a resolution to hire and a resolution to, I guess, terminate service with who we have now, that is gonna move forward. So I'm thinking January.
Didn't you say last meeting, Kevin, he was gonna be here tonight, you thought?
I know he had asked, and I don't know until it happens tonight, no idea, but I know he was talking about coming before we canceled the other one, I don't know if he had a previous commitment for tonight that he couldn't show up on, but I know he gets when the meetings are, because I sent him to put on the website, so. With that being said, I'm hoping that next month we can make that decision, pass it by resolution, it might give us a couple of months for them to get up and running, so hopefully it will be a seamless transfer.
Just to, Kevin, if I could, just to add one thing. North Shore has came up with a website just recently for a town. It's E as in Edward, lockport.com. And that website right there, I went on it and it's done very well.
Yeah, they do several, I think they're up to six right now.
Really?
They're doing, and they're a pretty good sized company, they're come highly recommended by our new security, cybersecurity firm. So, like I said, I wanna just make sure that the contracts that I gave to everybody are still the same, because it's been about three months, and then get a resolution ready for next month if everybody's on board with it. I'm not making that decision without everybody, so if they wanna move forward with it and do that, that would be what I would suggest, we take care of that in January, so that by February, we're ready to go. Selective Insurance, they have completed their annual review. They, comes up every three years. Our local agent has put the coverage out to bid. This is completed every three years to ensure that our rates are competitive in the industry. As it turns out, Selective Insurance was still the most competitive bid and will remain our carrier. They, they do it for us, which is kind of nice, because they know insurance better than we do to make sure we're comparing apples to apples, and they came in at this bid, so it looks like we're gonna stay with Selective. We've approved the town budget, as everybody knows, for the year 2023. Even with the added money placed into the 2023 budget for the improvement projects to the general and high, general fund and the highway budgets, we still remain under the 2% tax cap, and this year we remained under it by $8,064, if anybody's interested. The general remained at 30 cents per thousand, and the highway had a modest increase, it went from $281 to $291 per thousand. So even though we passed the local law to exceed the tax cap, if needed, we didn't have to do that, we stayed under it. Works and I have update. I have spoken with Mr. Davies at Clinton County Health Department, he has reported that at least one home in that area will most likely receive a, and it will now, after talking to him after I wrote this, it will receive a point entry system to treat their water. His department will continue to, continue testing in that area if the residents will allow for that to happen, to see if more is needed. The system is intended for a short-term solution to the problem. I've also, I have also been looking into applying for the 2023 Emergent Contaminants Grant. This program could provide 100% funding grant for the project, so I, I think that we should continue to move forward on a parallel path with that, keeping everything going the way it is, but I really do think that we, after I found out that that's 100%, at least this year it was, I'm not sure what it will be. It was the first year of that Emergent Contaminants Grant, and every year after that, they'll, they'll put new stuff in the game, so it'll be harder, and they might even cut back from 100% funding, so that's something I wanna look into to see if we can, I know we can apply with it for the PFOA and PFOF issues that were up there, so I don't know if we'll get it, but it might very well be worth putting in for. It would free up that ARCA money to be used somewhere else. Second Annual Skylar Falls Town and Light Holiday Festival and Lighted Fire Truck Parade was a huge success with estimates of between 75 and 200 in attendance throughout the day. I personally would like to thank all who worked so hard to pull it off. I would especially like to acknowledge and thank all the volunteers, many of whom not only donated their time, but brought decorations, crafts for the kids to make and holiday treats to eat. A big thank you to our emergency services and also the Side by Side Club for their time and dedication to provide all the light apparatus for the parade. All of your, excuse me, all of the commitment to your community has not gone unnoticed. I would look forward to the third annual next year. I think everybody had a good time and they wanna continue. I know Howard is down there, here, so today, thanks again for your help, but like I said, Barb could tell you more of all the names of the volunteers that we had this year and all the donations that everybody gave and not only have their time, but actually donated stuff.
Just kind of recapping.
Stewart's and all kinds of places.
Recap in my historian report, Stewart's and Bankers gave us stuff that new residents, the town brought cookies and Heather helped a lot with the crafts and the NATO.
So we, so that we don't forget to name anybody, we do have an active list of everybody that participated, and we will be sending out thank you letters, and hopefully we get the continued cooperation from everybody, but it was, it really was a blowout compared to last year, it was twice as many, over twice as many actually, so we'll try to keep that going. It also come to my attention that the Marshall Water Project congressional funding may have already been approved. I submitted this last year, it appears we have made it through all the cuts and are on the final federal budget for the president to sign. I know they just, the House just approved 1.7 trillion, so I don't think right now he's gonna not sign it because of the switch of ballots. Again, I will keep you all advised, when it is signed, this alone would add $2,560,000 of, you might as well call it grant money, but it's not, it's congressional funds to the Marshall Water Project. So I'm looking forward to the commitment letter whenever we get it. So that was a big boost to that project, that's for sure. That was one of the funding, I was hoping we got the we, we did not, but this is the one I didn't know if we would get, and it looks like we are gonna get it, so. Until I get in writing, I don't wanna, you know, go on the record and say it's ours and it's in hand, but that's what they're telling me. It also looks like the Sand Road Water District will be moving forward. I was notified that grant money has been approved for this budget. As I continue to work out the details with our partners, I will keep you informed of this progress. Again, this is that Emergent Contaminants Grant, and from what I understand, they did get it, so that, that Mars, or excuse me, the Sand Road Water Project looks like it's gonna be going through. So there's a, a whole bunch of moving parts with that that affects a couple of other things, so as I get more information, as we get things solidified, as we get the MOU signed by all parties, I'll start giving you a lot more information on it, but it looks like the stars are in alignment for a change and we're moving forward in a good direction, so I don't, I don't wanna jinx it.
What about all these little side roads that are off the Sand Road? I mean, the Vassar Road, does that have water to them right now?
The Vassar Road goes down three hydrants, they got pretty good water actually.
Because that place has gotta be contaminated probably more than anywhere, that's closest to the landfill.
Yeah, and, and when they did it, they did, they went through, not everybody answered the door knockers, they even sent reps out from, you know, the health department sent reps out to try to hit more people and try to get more people advised of what the contaminants were in that area, so that they can get their wells tested if they're not on public water. Vassar Road, the Sand Road side of. Um, Vassar Road, the Sand Road side of Vassar goes up three hydrants. So, you know, that takes care of pretty much most of the houses on that this end before you get that dead spot until you get to.
Is it, is the last hydrant below the fire, the old uh railroad bed, or is it? It's on the other side, you're that.
It's on the landfill side, right?
It, yeah.
It's on the landfill.
Yeah, yeah, that was part of uh New Court. When the county put in the water for New Court, they came down that far and they did do that section up through. I discussed uh with the engineers, trying to get a line down the Vassar Road, their backfill to our tank to loop that system, fill that tank the rest of the way. Uh, the way it is right now, uh, Gallowsville Springs can't take any more gallons per day, so. We're gonna, the good thing about the Sand Road Project is that is another way the Marshall Water Side does of uh. I should say off of uh Blueberry Hill up there, off of the town of Plattsburgh, we get fed by that side. They got all kinds of water. So with the Sand Road Project, not to get into it too deep, um, I'm kinda merging a few things up there to see if we can get. Uh, some of that stuff added in. And at the very least, there's something to look at for the town in cooperation with uh McAsnell or town of Plattsburgh. It would definitely help both um townships to get a tower up there. And build a back feed in it will leave some of their pressure from Gallowsville Springs. We could even backfeed Woods Millis District off of there and kinda alleviate some of the pressure off of Gallowsville Springs. But uh, there's, there's a lot moving there, you know, from all kinds of parts on that one.
What about Fattimer Street? Does that have water yet, or is it all water?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
I know, I thought they did part of it, but I didn't know they did it all.
Yeah, it goes, cause um, there isn't much left up there though.
Yeah.
Mostly that uh, that uh, cause that was about out. But uh, that did have public water, the next thing I know for it, so. I think, I think it did. I don't wanna miss speak, but I think it does.
Fattimer has water.
Fattimer does have water? Okay, thank you.
So I mean, if we are fortunate enough to get these loans and grants and everything together. Are we looking at improving our own water supply instead of being connected? And purchasing from the town of Plattsburgh? Are we ever taking a look at that to see if we could open that supply back up again and use it?
Well, I've said multiple times, Mr. Fratto, that I don't think we ever should have gave away our water supply, that that that's kind of all been backwards to the town, but um. You know, that happened way before this board, which.
Sure, sure.
Um, the, the town of Plattsburgh has a contract uh with us annually that they foresee for the near distant future. Um, as far as setting up our own water, my, to the best of my knowledge, um, we had, our biggest well would get silt in it. So that's nothing but fine sand and they'd have to uh suck the sand out of it, or instead of having a hundred and fifty foot well, you were down to seventy-five and then fifty and. So on and so on, as the the silt went in there, so. Uh, there's a couple of different ways that they could stop that. Actually, what they do is use a hydrofracking and get it all out at once and keep pumping it until it's gone. But uh, the cost of that would would be another grand. You would not be able to, you would not be able to start that thing up again now because you don't have anything up there anymore. I mean, the chlorination building is still there, but you don't have any of the chloration machinery or you don't have a, somebody to maintain it. We'd have to hire somebody instead of salary again. Um, I even spoke to a gentleman that worked in the water for forty something years. I'm sure you know who I'm talking about. He'd be willing to do that, but um, that would, that would be something to look at, I think, after we get this done. I've been looking on this for three years. We're finally to the point where the the patchwork quilt is finally getting all funding together that we make it feasible, so. Um, it's something very, very much interesting to me to look at, though. I agree that our own water would be.
When they, when they go through and do all that, Kev, are they responsible for anything to do with the road, the sidewalks? Did the con, does the contractor have to repair all that, or do we have to look into this?
If you're, you're talking about the Marshall Water Project or the Sand?
No, we're talking about the Sand Road, when they go right down, now you got a lot of driveways, a lot of sidewalks.
Yeah, so that's part of the MOU. So we don't have a a signed MOU. It's been back and forth four times. Um, I don't wanna get into the particulars of it until we do have it all signed, but um, we're, we're close, real close. And that was one of the, the last things that I sent back to them was to look at reclamation to make sure that it's been put back the way it is. And that includes sidewalks and roads and all that stuff. Uh, the hydrants every six hundred feet, like every new water system recommends by state and feds, so. Um, it'll, it'll definitely transform that whole area. Again, there's a, there's a lot of moving parts to that, because first of all, in order to create a district, we'd have to create a district. And that means that the people up there would have to let us create that district. So there'd be public hearings and um, there's a lot to it. Like I said, once I get the MOU signed, uh, I'm gonna give you a bunch of information. I just don't wanna, you know, get too much out there until I get the signatures and the.
When they do it, are they doing that trailer park by Vic McCaslin's?
Yes.
They will do that too? Okay, I didn't know if that was.
Nope, that will absolutely be part of it, yeah. Yeah, that helped uh, that probably helped one of the the most, was the most help for the grant was that area.
Yeah, I guess the last thing is, what about people down over the hill on the Kent Falls Road? If they're contaminating wells on the flat ground, I'm sure this stuff went down the hill and it's gone contamination in Kent Falls.
Right, and to my knowledge, there's one point of entry, point of entry system, this charcoal based filter filtration system. Uh, it, they usually use them short term so that they're not delivering bottles of water to them every day and they put that in. But they're uh, they're labor intensive, uh, they're all different depending on the contaminant levels and uh the water and the minerals. Uh, the charcoal filters need to be changed at different times, so it's not like we can say, okay, we got twenty people on these. At, you know, this day, we gotta change them all, because it goes by the particulate mass in that filter to see. So some may be earlier and need, need to be changed more often than others. So like I said, they're not, they're not looking at that as a, an end game. Um, when we looked at trying to get water to the one that we know about on the bottom of Kent Falls Road. Uh, that added, and this was about a year, year and some change ago, uh, about nine hundred thousand to a million dollars. And that was looking to go off a New Court rather than going all the way up Kent Falls Road, cause this end is good. Um. To to put the water line down the hill, so to speak, like you're saying, uh, off a New Court. But uh, there's only one at this time, so and then they, as far as I know, the counties uh, they haven't already put in a point of entry system there. So I think that's the short term of that one until we can get through this. Um, that's definitely something that will be discussed too as part of the, the Sand Road Project. And they end up being a.
Don't they say this contamination follows the river?
It's water, it's in the water. And the weird thing about it is like, you can have a house with a well here and, you know, seven hundred feet over here, you got contaminants. But the one that's only seventy-five feet away in the middle doesn't. It all depends on what vein of water they hit when they drilled their well. And you would, that's why we're looking at it to see, you know, if we can, matter of fact, he's looking at putting out another survey round and have them go out. But people have to allow you to go in, drink your top water, then bring it down into the, I don't know, and they get it tested, but uh. Some of them, some of them don't want. You know, so. No, that's all good.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, no, we're still looking at that Kent Falls Road, but that one's, you know, it's, it's progressed with the Sand Road. But again, it was one down there, which they put a point entry system on. They just don't wanna have twenty-five or fifty of them on point entry systems, cause they get, they're regulated also by uh Clinton County Health Department. That answers all of your questions. But uh, that's what I had there. If there's nothing forward, we'll keep going. Probably take care of new business and old business, so that brings us to resolutions. Uh, resolutions tonight are twenty-two ninety-nine through twenty-two one fifteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Correction. Twenty-two six, one sixteen. All right, uh, the first one, regular meeting, resolution twenty-two dash ninety-nine. Uh, motion be resolved that the town board reappoints Timmy Hobbin to the zoning board of appeals. Appointment effective immediately and takes player on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven. Um, I'll get the uh, motion in a second and then I got discussion on that. Motion by Mr. Fratto, or excuse me, by Mr. Newton, I apologize.
Second.
My Mr. Fratto. All right, uh, so Mr. Hobbin is required to complete training as required by state statute to obtain four hours of training per year. Or an accumulation of twenty-five hours per term, because it boils down to be four hours per year and they're, they, they have a five year term. It can be accum- uh, cumulative. So if he takes twenty hours the first year, he don't have to do anything until his fifth year, and then he'd have to do another four hours, okay? Um, so basically, he took over an unexplained term. He's got, he's been in now just a hair over a year. Uh, it looks like the first one he's able to go to as far as training will be April sixteenth through Tuesday, April eighteenth. And that's uh in Saratoga. Um, I'm also gonna recommend that anybody else that is on the ZBA board or the planning board and needs their annual training, uh, go to that. It's uh, it's a lot less expensive than going to New York City, but the, the, the good thing is it's um, it's honed in for planning and zoning. So that's exactly what their boards are and that's exactly where I think uh they should start, so. He's willing to do that. Um, upon having said that, we are gonna waive the requirement of the four years for last year. Uh, if this resolution goes forward, then we are allowed to do that.
Hey, Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Fratto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. Um. Resolution twenty-two dash one hundred. Motion be resolved that the town board reappoints Vic McCaslin to the planning board. Appointment effective immediately and takes player on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven. Again, I'll give some discussion on that and if I can get a motion.
Motion.
All right, Mr. Bruno?
Second.
Mr. Newton? Yeah, as I just said, I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, um. I'm gonna recommend that Mr. McCaslin also do that, so uh, go to that same training in April. That'll give him his four hours for this year. Uh, Mr. McCaslin has been to the New York City training three times, so he had plenty of uh hours of training to make his twenty-five hours. So with that having said, if there's no other discussion, we'll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Fratto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. All right, twenty, twenty-two one oh one. Uh, motion be resolved that the town of Scott Falls Town Board acknowledges the resignation of William LaCount Code Officer. Effective date of December first, twenty twenty-two.
Move.
All right, Mr. Fratto, second?
Second.
Mr. Newton? There's no discussion, we'll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Fratto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. Okay, twenty-two uh, zero oh two?
One oh two, yeah.
All right, motion. Whereas the town board of the town of Scott Falls has recognized the health and safety issues of the residents of Rixton Avenue and. Whereas the town board of the town of Scott Falls entered into a contract with LeBurg Group Engineering for the development and installation of water improvements to serve the residents of Rixton Avenue. And whereas said agreement outlined their participation are. Prepar- uh, uh, plan, preparation of plans, thank you, and engineering studies to provide for the installation of municipal water lines to serve the residents and a single business which. Are located on Rixton Avenue. Whereas the town board of the town of Scott Falls had a regular meeting on May twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-two and approved said agreement in the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand five hundred dollars with LeBurg Group Engineering by. Adoption of resolution twenty-two fifty and whereas it was agreed that the funds for the Rixton Avenue Water Project will be drawn from the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, award received from the town of Scott Falls. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the town board of the town of Scott Falls will continue with said agreement to provide municipal water to the residents of Rixton Ave only. In accordance with resolution number twenty-two dash fifty. So that would need a motion to carry it further.
So we're not doing a loop, we're just gonna do straight Rixton Avenue only?
That is what, this resolution was uh provided by Mr. Fratto and only wanted to go forward with uh a very narrow scope of Rixton Ave. I think that with the grants that uh now just became available and not only uh talking about. The work that could be performed as in-service work um by three other family owners up there. I really think it shouldn't go through, but it's something on my own opinion. I think that we got a lot to discuss on Rixton Avenue uh to get this thing through. And I don't think that we should narrow the scope down. That's my own opinion.
Do you do a motion first and then you can discuss it?
Yeah, if we get a motion.
I certainly wanna discuss it, but. If I don't have a second, I can't discuss.
Did you motion?
Oh, yes, I submitted it, yes.
Well, I know, but I still.
Okay, sure. If I get a second, I can at least discuss that, why I did this.
Well, if there's no second, then we're not gonna proceed with it. I'm definitely not a second, I'll tell you that.
Well, I certainly wanna comment on it. I certainly wanna comment on it. Uh, and my comment is this. We have a contract with LeBurg Group for fourteen thousand five hundred for Rixton Avenue only. Now, what ended up happening, and I'm on the water committee.
I'm gonna stop you right there, because.
Well, I've gotta continue.
No, you don't.
Well, of course I do.
Basically.
Of course I do.
There is no discussion on a motion that didn't get a second. And I don't make the rules, I just follow them, but there is no motion to to move this thing forward. We need it to. And it's not nothing that would definitely have a hurt.
We've got ARPA money being spent illegally. We sure do have to talk about it.
I would watch what I declare.
Inappropriately, I'll replace the word.
I would watch what I declared on the record up here.
I, I at least would like to address the board on this.
Or position.
I agree.
It's okay, I'll bring it up again.
All right, next resolution, 22103. These are gonna be uh quite a few in consecutive order here. These are for the uh CDVG grant. Motion, whereas the town board supports certain uh maintenance of affordable housing in the town of Scholar Falls and whereas the town applied for a grant from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD under the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, Small Cities Program administered by the New York State Housing Trust Fund Corporation Office of Community Renewal, OCR. And whereas the town was awarded project 1047 HR306-22 for the general purposes of rehabilitating housing and notice to that effect was provided to the town by OCR on November 10th, 2022 for the amount of $250,000. Resolved that the town board wishes to accept the award and authorizes the town supervisor to execute an agreement between the town of Scholar Falls and the Office of Community Renewal, New York State HTFC. And resolved that the town board wishes to engage the services of Friends of the North Country Incorporated, Friends to administer the 2022 Town Scholar Falls Rehabilitation Program Award and authorizes the town supervisor to execute an agreement between the town of Scholar Falls and Friends who will for subsequent on behalf of the town of Scholar Falls in accordance with OCR guidelines. So if we get a motion for that?
Motion.
And Mr. Facto?
Second.
And Mr. Bruno? Any discussion? We'll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. All right, next one is 104. Uh, motion be resolved the town of Scholar Falls Town Board authorized the town supervisor to sign a fair housing plan adopted by the Scholar Falls Town Board for the town's Office for Community Renewal, Community Development Block Grant Project 1047 HR306-22 Housing Rehabilitation Program. I get a motion?
Motion.
And Mr. Newton?
Second.
All right, Mr. Facto? Any discussion? We'll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.